Menanasiduus and Buenas colleagues. I'm Nina Trente Shetin, Alejesa Torre in Guahan. It's called to order. Majority Leader Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sujus Masi, Madam Speaker. Good morning, colleagues. I move to waive, notwithstanding Section 1.02 Sessions of Alejesa Torre in Guahan, H1 Privileges of the Floor, Persons Allowed to Permit the Students of Guahan Academy Charter School and our Youth Island Leadership Day Counterparts into the Session Hall.
On that motion, notwithstanding the rules to allow the Guahan Academy Charter School and our Youth Leadership Day Counterparts onto the Session Floor, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Welcome to our youth counterparts this morning. I have with me Sujin Oh. She's also the Legislative Speaker for the day. And congratulations to all of you for being here. And we have a nice representation from all the schools. And here we have, welcome to Guahan Academy Charter. All right, so we are now on our agenda. We are going to do the prayer. We are going to do the recognition of a recipient of Imeladun Mastakilu Nasacrifisu. We will do the Inefresi, and then we will do the singing of the Guam hymn and the National Hymn. All right, so to begin with the prayer. Senators Sinagustin, you are recognized. Please rise.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. In the name of the Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit, amen. God, our Father, we gather today to begin this session and ask for your guidance as we work to bring light to the lives of our people. We know that where two or three are gathered in your name, you are there in their midst. We ask for your inner session as we work to deliberate, deliberate and deliver on the matters that are important to our people. Lord, you ask that we love you, we love as you loved us. Help us to be symbols of that love for all who call Guam home. Build us up to be your stewards of peace and compassion. Guide us into this session that we may always do what is in our people's best interest. May all our days in session and throughout our lives be blessed as the sand of our seashore, and may your wisdom be imparted on as brilliantly as the stars in the heavens. We ask this all in your name, amen. In the Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit, amen.
Sujus Masi, Senator. For the recognition, to express a never-ending and never-forgotten gratitude by the people of Guam, the legislature recognizes recipients of Imeladun Mastakilu Nasacrifisu on a display in the Guam Congress Building and during each of its sessions. And for the recognition of a recipient of Imeladun Mastakilu Nasacrifisu, Senator Brown, you are recognized.
On behalf of a grateful island and country, we honor Corporal Federico V. Dela Cruz and the family of Corporal Federico V. Dela Cruz for making the ultimate sacrifice in service and defense of our island and our country.
Sujus Masi, Senator. Please remain standing, and we welcome the Guahan Academy Charter School to lead us in the recitation of the Inefresi, the singing of the Guam hymn in Chamorro, and the singing of the National Anthem.
(Singing) Bennoh Ki Chamoru Kulit Anota Konse Na Tsunoriai Tolu Iluka. (Singing) Karai Ora Karai Goria Abiba Yes Na Senpara. Karai Ora Karai Goria Abiba Yes Na Senpara. U Tolu I Tempu I Past Karai Ta Zangin I La Ina Beni Shon. Konse Apili Gru Na Fa Tsafuha Zuz Pro Tep I Is La One. Konse Apili Gru Na Fa Tsafuha Zuz Pro Tep I Is La One. Oh, say, can you see By the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, Gave proof to the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Sujus Masi to Guahan Academy Charter School. We're now on roll call. Clerks, please take roll.
Senator Barnett. Senator Blas. Senator Brown. Senator Duñez. Senator Fisher. Senator Luhon. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes. Senator Parkinson. Senator Perez. Senator Canata. Senator Sinagustin. Senator Sinicless. Senator Shelton. Senator Titegui. Speaker Turlahing. Madam Speaker, there is a quorum.
Sujus Masi, Clerk. We're now on the approval of the Legislative Journal. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sujus Masi, Madam Speaker. I move to approve the Legislative Journal dated March 18, 2024, subject to corrections.
On that motion to approve journals subject to correction, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sujus Masi, Madam Speaker. There are communications and petitions, and I move that they be appended to today's Session Journal.
On that motion to append communications and petitions to our journal, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sujus Masi, Madam Speaker. There are messages from Imaga, Hagen, Guahan, and I move that they be appended to today's Session Journal.
On that motion to append messages, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sujus Masi, Madam Speaker. There are reports of standing committees, and I move that they be appended to today's Session Journal.
On that motion, that reports be appended to the Journal, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sujus Masi, Madam Speaker. There are no reports of select committees.
Sujus Masi. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sujus Masi, Madam Speaker. I move that bills introduced, Bill numbers 261-37LS through 262-37LS and 263-37COR through 275-37COR, and resolutions introduced, Resolution numbers 356-37LS through 361-37LS and 362-37COR through 378-37COR be deemed to have been given their first reading.
On that motion regarding the introduction and first reading of bills and resolution, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Colleagues, we're now on motions. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move that all bills that have an appropriation attached to it be moved to the bottom of the agenda to be heard in the Committee of the Whole. And that is specifically Bill Number 234-37COR, introduced by Senator Joe S. Sinagustin, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Roy A. B. Canata, Dwayne T. D. Sinicless, an act to amend Section 90.308, Article 7, Chapter 90, Title IX, Guam Code annotated relative to increasing the pledge or reservation of revenues of the Department of Corrections' Modernization Act of 2021. Again, that's to move to the bottom of the file for the Committee of the Whole.
There's a motion to move Bill 234 to the bottom of the agenda for Committee of the Whole. Is there any objection to that motion to rearrange the agenda? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're still on motions. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sujus Masi, Madam Speaker. I move that all congratulatory, commendatory, and condolence resolutions introduced today and for the remainder of this legislative session be considered first read and adopted to allow the Legislative Council to make technical corrections and to add all senators as cosponsors.
On that motion regarding congratulatory, commendatory, and condolence resolutions, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're still on motions. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move to excuse members not present for today's session.
On that motion to excuse members not present, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're still on motions. Is there any other senator who has a motion? Senator Barnett, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. May I make a motion to place in the voting file from the Committee on Education, Public Safety, and the Arts?
Nominations?
Yeah.
We'll get to that on the next item, which is legislative. Is it on legislative concurrence already? What is the name? Yeah, all right. So we'll get to that under legislative concurrence. Is there any other motions? If not, we will move to legislative concurrence on our agenda. Senator Barnett, you are recognized.
Menanasiduus, and good morning to all of our partners here for Island Youth Leadership Day. I hope it's a little, I remember last year, I forget what we were debating, but it was a pretty heated debate, so just buckle up, kids. It's gonna be a good Friday. Biba Betness. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Education, Public Safety, and the Arts the nomination of Roberta M. Abadai to serve as a member, a community at large representative of the Guam Commission for Educator Certification with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion to place the nomination of Roberta M. Abadai to the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Ma'am, can I just do my other motions now? Would that be appropriate at this time?
Sure, what is your motion?
Thank you. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Education, Public Safety, and the Arts the nomination of Christine W. Beletto to serve as a member, upper-level management position, and private business representative of the Guam Education Board with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion to place the nomination of Christine Beletto onto the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Tablo MBI, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Education, Public Safety, and the Arts the nomination of Michelle Ms. Santos, education doctor, to serve as a member of the Guam Commission for Educator Certification with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion to place the nomination of Michelle Santos onto the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Sujus Masi, Madam Speaker.
Ben Pibeto. Senator Canata? Senator? Senator Canata? Or Senator? Or Majority Leader?
Sujus Masi, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Infrastructure, Economic Development, Simon Sanchez High School, Disability Services, Self-Determination, and Historic Preservation Housing, Public Accountability, and the Guam buildup, the nomination of Selena Ashland to serve as a member, construction industry representative of the Guam Contractors' License Board with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion to place the nomination of Selena Ashland to the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sujus Masi, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the same committee the nomination of Bernard Neil S. Beneventi to serve as a member, construction industry representative of the Guam Contractors' License Board with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion to place the nomination of Bernard Neil S. Beneventi to the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sujus Masi, Madam Speaker. From that same committee, I move to place in the voting file, that same committee reports out the nomination of Matthew C. Cruz to serve as a member, general public representative of the Guam Contractors' License Board with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion to place the nomination of Matthew C. Cruz, is Senator Titegui?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for recognizing me, and good morning to my colleagues. I'm just trying to look on the agenda here for Matthew Cruz, and I don't see it here. Is it on the agenda?
Number six under legislative concurrence.
Okay, thank you for that correction, Madam Speaker. And since I'm up here already, I'm also noticing that we are skipping Rosemary Clement from the Member of KGTF PBS Guan.
Yeah, we're not skipping, we'll get there.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. So on the nomination of Matthew C. Cruz to be placed on the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sujus Masi, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Human Resources, Haguenia Revitalization, Regional Affairs, Public Libraries, Telecommunications, Technology, and Federal and Foreign Affairs, the nomination of Rosemary A. Clement to serve as a member of the Guam Educational Telecommunications Corporation, KGTF PBS Board of Trustees with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion to place the nomination of Rosemary Clement to the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We've completed legislative concurrences. So we're moving on to second reading. All right. So we're on second reading, and the first bill on second reading is Bill Number 57-37COR. Senator Barnett, you are recognized.
Ma'am, can I motion to place my bill at the bottom of the agenda?
There's a motion to place Bill 57 to the bottom of the agenda before the appropriations bill. Is there any objection to that motion? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on Bill Number 85-37LS. Senator Parkinson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I make the motion to move Bill Number 85-37LS, as amended by the Committee on Environment, Revenue, and Taxation, Labor Procurement, and Statistics Research and Planning, to the third reading file for discussion. Bill Number 85-37, as an act to add a new subsection C5 to subsection 3603 of Article 6, Chapter 3, Title 22, Guam Code annotated relative to extending family care and medical leave for miscarriages and stillbirth, and I would like to discuss.
Yes, please proceed.
Honorable colleagues, arise to speak on Bill Number 85-37LS, a measure that seeks to amend our existing family care and medical leave policies to include support for employees who experiences miscarriages or stillbirths. At present, our laws provide leave for significant life events, including the birth or adoption of a child, the serious health condition of a family member, or the death of a loved one. Yet there remains a critical gap, the lack of specific leave for miscarriages and stillbirths, experiences that bring profound grief and require time for healing just as acutely as conditions currently acknowledged. Bill Number 85-37LS proposes to address this gap by establishing the right to leave for employees undergoing the heartbreak of a miscarriage or stillbirth, either personally or within their immediate family. This change is not merely a legal formality. It is a compassionate recognition of the pain involved in these tragic circumstances. Though I am not a woman and will never fully comprehend the personal anguish of losing an unborn child, I stand before you as a spouse and an expecting father who has seen the shadows such grief can cast. My wife, Camille, and I have endured the pain of a miscarriage. These experiences, though deeply personal, are sadly not unique to us. Many of our constituents face similar challenges, often without the support or understanding needed at such a critical time. Our current policies allow eligible employees up to 12 weeks of leave for qualifying reasons. This bill ensures that experiencing a miscarriage or stillbirth is rightfully acknowledged as a qualifying reason. By supporting Bill Number 85-37, we affirm our commitment to the well-being of our workers and their families. We extend a hand of empathy and support to those who would need it most, recognizing that the path to recovery from such a loss should not be walked alone. I commend Senator Amanda Shelton for her partnership and cosponsoring this vital piece of legislation. Together, we urge this body to pass this bill, reflecting our collective dedication to the dignity and humanity of all our people. With that, I yield the rest of my time. Madam Speaker, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Parkinson. On the bill, Bill 85-37LS, as amended by the committee, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Fisher, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. This is more or less a comment. I'd like to thank Senator Shelton, and I'd like to thank Senator Parkinson for bringing this forward. I wasn't unaware, I was not aware that we had had this gap in compassionate treatment of the people of Guam. It's a wonderful thing to do. Thank you for discovering this lapse and bringing it to our attention. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. Is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Sinicless, you are recognized.
Good morning, Madam Speaker, and good morning, colleagues. I'd just like to commend the author and the sponsor, and I also like to be a sponsor to this. Anytime you have a chance to be, you know, that our government can show compassion, it's a wonderful thing. I like, I always mention that I have a couple more hundred hours before I can get my marriage and family therapy. And I know that, you know, through my studies, being a counselor, that this is a, when women, you know, lose, you know, their child, it's such a profound, it takes, it has such a profound effect on them. And this bill is, you know, it's, 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 here I am again saying it's a wonderful bill, but it is, it truly is. It shows compassion, and it shows the willingness of our government to take care of those who have experienced loss, especially in this manner. And so I commend the author, and I'd like to be a cosponsor to this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sujus Masi, Senator Sinicless. Is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Barnett, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just had a question for the author, because I was doing my research, and I believe that, if I'm not mistaken, the Pregnancy Fair Workers, the Pregnant Workers' Fairness Act went into effect in June of last year, and this is a federal motion through the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, and as of June 27 last year, leave for individuals, women, of course, who suffer from miscarriages or stillbirth is already allowed under this act. So I just wanted to ask the author what this bill does that the Pregnant Workers' Fairness Act doesn't, ma'am.
Would the author yield to the question? Would the author yield to the question?
Yes, ma'am. I believe that this clarifies it in our statutes, as well as I believe this law also expands who could avail, so it's not just the people experiencing the miscarriages and stillbirth, but also immediate family as well.
Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, if I can add a point of information.
Sure. Senator Shelton, as a majority leader, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. These federal statutes usually apply in situations where there is no merit system in place, but as you know, we in Gov. Guam do have a merit system in place, and so this bill would strengthen that federal statute for us to ensure that it is clear in our local books that we are taking care of these women who have experienced a miscarriage or a stillbirth.
This is Massey, Senator Shelton. Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I thank the author and the co-sponsor for the information. Yeah, I was just wondering, because I actually got a few emails in support of the measure, so I just wanted to put it out there that these regulations and these allowances went into effect again in June of last year, and so maybe people don't know that the, they're already charging people against this. So if you are currently working and you have a miscarriage or a stillbirth, and you are not granted the leave, you can actually file Equal Employment Opportunity Complaint. And so to me, I take that to mean that these statutes and these allowances are already in place. And not to say, you know, I don't support the measure, but I just asked for clarity because I wasn't sure if we were duplicating the federal standard, which again applies to everybody who clocks in and out and works at a job, or if we were somehow filling gaps that maybe the federal allowances didn't cover, ma'am. So, yeah, I just would say that especially for those who have reached out to my office, we're composing a response to them to just make them aware that these allowances are already in place, and, you know, everybody should be able to avail of these today, you know, whether or not this bill passes. So I certainly commend the efforts of the author and the co-sponsor, and I again thank them for addressing the questions that I had about whether or not, and, you know, I don't want to say whether or not this statute is needed. Again, I just did want to say on the record that through the Pregnant Workers' Fairness Act, again, leave time for stillbirths and miscarriages is already granted. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the bill? Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I certainly do rise in support of this bill, whether it's through federal mandate or through the passage of this bill, and it becomes law here in terms of our local statutes. But I do want to point out something, and I can't help myself but saying it. I hope our colleagues are as gracious, because we acknowledge in, when we talk about these issues, and certainly it is loss, if you have a pregnancy and you lose that pregnancy through a natural process. But I hope our colleagues are as gracious when we're talking about the issues of life, especially we have legislation that's been introduced that essentially would allow for drive-through abortions in this island, without any review, without any consultation, without any counseling or information being provided to a woman who may want to choose to have an abortion. So I appreciate all our male colleagues coming forth and talking about this, but I think that's something to think about, the irony of how important and how do we value life if we recognize that life in the womb, especially for whatever reason, through natural causes, a pregnancy does not continue. But that's the other side of the coin when we talk about abortion, because it's not so pleasant, the reality, that we are choosing to bring an end to life. So think about that, colleagues, as you talk about this bill, because we acknowledge that there is emotional impact, especially when you're anticipating the birth of a child, when you are carrying in your womb, especially a child that's anticipated, and a family, and a mother, and a father, grandparents, brothers, sisters, all looking forward to the birth of that child, and then for whatever reason, that child is lost before they're born. So think about that, colleagues, because we're acknowledging through this process that there is grieving and there is loss. And as we know, with loss for many of us, including those in our lives that have had a chance to live, we feel that the rest of our lives, until our time comes. That's the irony. We will talk about this and think we're being supportive of women out there in our community, and yet we advocate abortion, the killing of children in the womb. We can't be all sides on an issue, colleagues, and I'm just bringing that up because I'm sure if and when the time comes that we're here to debate such legislation, to remove all ability of providing support, counseling, information, and education to women. We're so quick to want to remove all that and call it, you know, women's health, that we're being proactive. But the reality of it is we actually are killing a life. We actually are killing a child that's in the womb of a mother. So keep that in mind, my dear colleagues, for you that advocate for abortion and the killing of babies. With that, Madam Speaker, I have no further comments on this bill.
This is Massey, Senator Brown. Is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on this bill? Senator Taitikui, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I couldn't say it any better than the previous speaker about the importance of this legislation, and of course, to assist those women who've lost something so precious in their life, not just the mothers, but also the fathers. They feel that same pain. But I just want to make it clear that this legislation is, you know, under the federal guidelines, under the Pregnancy Workers' Fairness Act. There's no doubt about that. And it doesn't only apply to government of Guam, but it also applies to the private sector as well. So those who are listening, this is already federal law, and it's not just government of Guam. Again, it's also the private sector. So thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Taitikui. On the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Ahn, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of Bill 85-37LS. A personal story basically, September 5th, 1985, my first, our firstborn son. My wife then, and my in-laws at the time, this was their first grandchild. My sister-in-law at the time was pregnant as well. About a week and a half later was her delivery date, and as we were, of course, still celebrating the firstborn, firstborn grandson, my first son, my first child, our first child, we were all gathered at the hospital as well for my sister-in-law's first child, which would have been the first granddaughter, and my son's first cousin. There was no indication at all that there was anything wrong, except for the fact that my sister-in-law at the time, during her pregnancy, I guess it's called, I guess pregnancy, or diabetes through pregnancy, so she was treated for that. But there was no indication at all that there was anything wrong with the fetus or the baby. So we all, again, we were gathered at the hospital in the delivery room, not at the delivery room, but outside, only to find out that when the baby was born, it was stillborn. And so the joy that we had as a family celebrating the first grandchild, the first grandson, and what would have been our first, or my in-law's first granddaughter, my son's first cousin, was devastating. And so to this date, well, let me go back, so my sister-in-law Jane at the time, she recovered, her physical recovery, of course, from childbirth, she recovered from that. But the emotional scars, to this date, still linger. And of course, as we celebrate, and this year we'll be celebrating my son's 39th birthday, to this date, a week and a half later, we're still, this scar is just still too fresh that we also lost. Our first female niece, granddaughter, and cousin. And so I stand in full support of this bill. Again, we may, and either parents, the mother, father, siblings, and grandparents may recover, again, from the physical side of, or the mother recover from the physical side of childbirth. There is a lingering emotional and mental part that continues and lingers. So with that, again, Madam Chair, and my colleagues, again, I stand in full support of this bill, Bill 85-37LS. And I thank, I think the author, the authors, for the introduction. And again, just thinking back, almost 39 years, it's like it was only yesterday, so thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, is there any other senator who'd like to be recognized on the bill?
On Bill Number 85-37, Speaker Tralhuy, you are recognized.
This is Massey, and I'd like to, if possible, pose a couple of questions to the author before I talk more generally about the bill, and if he could just clarify. So the bill itself adds to 22 GCA Section 3603C5, it's our family care and medical leave means the following, and it adds number five, leave for reason of occurrence of a miscarriage or stillbirth by the employee or family member of the employee. So the author would yield, could you please clarify which employers this new law is going to apply to? It's my understanding that this will now apply to private employers on Guam, and I just want to make that discussion very clear on our record, and not just the government of Guam. And so if you could clarify which employers, and exactly what must the employers now provide after the passage of this law?
Okay, I apologize. That was a lot, Madam Speaker. Could you please repeat the question?
If you could just clarify for the record, which employers this law is going to behold to give leave, and what exactly are they required to give?
So the thing that we are looking to give is leave for people who experience complications, a medical leave for everyone who experiences complications regarding stillbirths and miscarriages. And, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, may I take a moment's recess to clarify something?
A moment's recess.
The legislature is back from recess. Senator Parkinson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So to answer the question on who can avail of this, or what defines employer, in this situation, it's employers that have 20 employees, including the government of Guam, would be caught under this umbrella. And employees themselves may not avail themselves of this leave, of this medical leave, until they've worked there at least 12 months and 1,000 hours the previous calendar year.
Sisus Massey, and how much leave then are they granted according to this?
No more than 12 weeks, ma'am.
12 weeks. All right, thank you. So this bill is going to extend this provision to all private employers on Guam who have over 20 employees, 20 or more employees. It's going to mandate they give 12 weeks of leave within a 12-month period. And all right, and I am not sure what the PFWA grants federally. However, my understanding is that this bill might be more generous than that, and that on the testimony of Jane Flores from the Bureau of Women's Affairs, she pointed out that this amendment allows leave more generous for employees in the federal FMLA as it covers employers with 20 or more employees, whereas the federal FMLA covers employers with 25 employees or more. And FMLA, Guam FMLA currently allows for up to 12 weeks of leave within a 12-month period. And so, that would be who it applies to. And I just wanted to make sure that that's clear, because, you know, when this applies to these employers, we are looking for their good faith cooperation, and actually, they will now be mandated by law and subject to action if they do not comply. I support this bill. I mean, I support leave for sure for this situation. I support that it be extended to mothers who have lost their babies due to miscarriage or stillbirth. And as, again, the Bureau of Women's Affairs pointed out in their testimony, this is actually too common. There's one in five pregnancies end in miscarriage, according to their statistics. We know from the Department of Public Health in recent testimony that they have actually pointed to a serious drastic decline in maternal care for pregnant women because of the closure of the Central Mingilau Public Health Clinic, and because of the challenges to the northern and the southern health clinics, and many other challenges that the women of Guam are facing. But this decline in maternal child care, I believe, is probably a contributing factor, but also something that we have to be very, very serious about addressing. And those nurses have told us from public health that opening up that clinic back at Mingilau with the resources that they had in there would allow them and empower them to take care of so many more pregnant women on Guam. And I think that's really should also be part of what we are doing here today. Obviously, women who lose their babies, it's, as all the testimony confirmed, but we all know, if this has happened to us, we know it's painful, we know it is life-changing, we know it affects our families. We know these things, there's so much pain. And because it's so much more common than it should be here on Guam, I just want to say to these women that I'm very sorry for your loss. I'm also very sorry, because we've received calls in our office, women being denied this leave. And I really think that was so unconscionable. So they were required to go back to work immediately. And as we know, this is not something that is ever planned. It is sometimes unexplainable, but very painful. So I'm also very sorry for those women who have called my office, those women on Guam who haven't called my office or made any of their story public, who have lost their babies in this situation and have been denied leave under those circumstances. I'm sorry for that pain. So I'm glad that this bill and the federal laws will ensure consistent application, that we recognize this loss, and that we are able to take care of these women primarily, and other family members that are affected. We know that this happens at different stages. And every woman and their situation is different in how they're able to deal with it. So I stand in support of the bill. And I know that this comes with, you know, a cost. But I think the cost of the lack of maternal child care is also a huge cost that the women of Guam and the families of Guam should not be bearing when we have the resources available to take care of them. We have the equipment, the buildings, the nurses at public health willing and asking us to help them to take care of these women in their pregnancies, and in turn, take care of these children, give them the best opportunities when they are born. So, Sisus Massey, to the sponsor of the bill, for yielding to my questions and clarifying that for all the employers of Guam. Sisus Massey, to the employers who will be bound by this, and those who have, even without being bound, taken care of their employees in this way. I'm very grateful to those who found that important and a benefit to their company to take care of their employees in that way, and I hope that we all continue to do that. So I rise in support of this bill, Madam Speaker. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. On the bill, bill 85-37, Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This is on bill number 85-37 LS, am I right? Wanted to make sure. Madam Speaker, Manana Sizouz, thank you for giving me the opportunity to rise in support of this measure as introduced by the good Senator from Mongong, right, Myt? Yes. Hopefully, he can afford me the opportunity to be a part of this cosponsorship also. As we look at the inclusion, Madam Speaker, we know that the four existing allowed reasons to use family care and medical leave act, leave are the birth of a child of the employee or the placement of a child with an employee in connection with the adoption or foster care of the child by the employee, leave to care for a parent, spouse, or child and employee or parent or child of the spouse of an employee who has serious conditions because of an employee's own serious health condition that makes the employee unable to perform the functions of the position of that employee, except for leave taken for disability on account of pregnancy, childbirth, or related medical conditions, the death of the family of the employee. And this added addition, Madam Speaker, is leave for reason of occurrence of a miscarriage or stillbirth by the employee or family member of the employee. Madam Speaker, not too long ago, I introduced legislation just to be able to provide women in pregnancy the opportunity to get accommodations for them in the workplace. And, and as I look at this legislation before us, I too want to say thank you, as the retiring speaker, to speak in support of this measure, because again, it literally affords the mother who literally is going through an emotional turmoil based on what has happened during the miscarriage or the stillbirth by that parent, by that mother. And I'm saying that as we look at affording those, literally, something like this would be an automatic accommodation so the mother can cope. The federal government provides us, Madam Speaker, with a family leave and medical act, which is probably sometimes up to six months. But we forget that the mother literally is the backbone and barrier of everything in the home front. And, and providing this measure will literally be good for that parent who is going through such a sad ordeal. I don't wish that on any, any mother. I also know that, that the pain and suffering, the emotional suffering, for someone who has to go through a miscarriage or having a child who's stillborn is incredibly hard. As I know, a couple of family members have gone through it. You know, as mothers, we are resilient, right? We try and bounce back, we, we just get up and go, right? Our nonas taught us how to be strong, be brave, continue to move forward, because we are the forefront of the family, and we keep the family together. I want to thank you, Madam Speaker, and I want to thank the author for this measure, because it is personal to me. It is personal to a family member who has gone through this. And I hope and pray that even with this added provision, that the mother doesn't give up, right? That the mother will find an opportunity to overcome and to be able to, to literally come back and be able to start a family once everything is, is is literally, I guess, accept it. This, this legislation literally would mean a lot to the mothers and the expected mothers out there who who've tried and tried and and can't be able. But we, we can't give up for them, right? We got to give them an avenue where they can seek and find peace within themselves and be able to move on. So, Madam Speaker, before I get emotional, I'm going to say, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in support of this measure. And thank the author, Senator Parkinson, for really bringing this to the forefront. And I'm hoping this measure gets the full support of our colleagues, but more importantly, other policies that are out there that support women and mothers who literally want to start family and just being able to get accommodations for them when they're in the workplace so that they can do more for their families. So, Undunkulina Sizouz Massey, and I hope my colleagues support this measure in unison to support mothers. Senamasi, thank you.
Senamasi, Vice Speaker. On the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the bill? If not, then sponsor may close on the bill. Senator S. Shelton, you're recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of bill number 85-37, which I thank Senator Parkinson for allowing me to be his first cosponsor on. Madam Speaker, established in June of 2016 through public law 33-170, the Guam Family Care and Medical Leave Act currently extends to GovGuam employees and private employers with more than 20 employees the ability to request for 12 weeks of unpaid leave per year based on the following conditions: because of the birth of the employee's child, to care for the employee's parent, spouse, or child who has a serious health condition, because the employee has a serious health condition, because the death of a family member of the employee. And if enacted, Madam Speaker, this bill would extend family care and medical leave for miscarriages and stillbirths, allowing better protections and coverage for much-needed time off for women across our island who may experience a major life event such as a miscarriage or stillbirth. As the Oversight Chair on Women's Affairs, I stand in full support of this measure that would extend entitlements for leave for women who have undergone such a tragic yet extremely common life event. It's important to note for the record, Madam Speaker, that miscarriages are much more common than most people realize. According to the National Library of Medicine, up to one in four known pregnancies may end in miscarriage. Furthermore, health experts say the total number of miscarriages is probably much higher because many, perhaps most miscarriages occur early in pregnancy, usually before a person knows they are pregnant. Acknowledging the welfare of Guam's women during this difficult time, it's an important way that we close the gap in our existing family care and medical leave law, to extend protections for them to access much-needed leave from work and allow them adequate time to heal and recover physically, mentally, emotionally. Madam Speaker, I thank all of our colleagues who have spoken in support of this legislation, and of course, to Senator Parkinson, the prime sponsor of this bill, for introducing such thoughtful, meaningful legislation in support of Guam's women. Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Massey. Will the
And, Madam Speaker? With that, I'd like to make a motion to add colleagues as a cosponsor, Senator Tom Fisher, Senator Duane Siniklas, Senator, Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, Senator Jesse Luhon.
On that motion to add cosponsors, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Is there anyone else speak on the bill? If not, then the sponsor may close on the bill.
So, I just wanted to clarify a little bit some of the differences between the local law proposed now and the federal law. The Pregnant Workers Fairness Act requires a covered employer to provide a reasonable accommodation to a qualified employer applicant, known limitations related affected by or arising out of a pregnancy, childbirth, or related medical condition unless the accommodation will cause the employer an undue hardship. The Pregnant Workers Fairness Act applies only to accommodations. So the PWFA does not replace federal, state, or local laws that are more protective of workers that are affected by pregnancy, childbirth, or other related medical conditions. And currently, more than 30 states and cities have laws that require employees to provide accommodations for pregnant workers. In this, in the case of the federal law, leave can be a reasonable accommodation for that employee request under the PWFA, but there are still some gaps there, because an employee does not have to provide leave if it causes an undue hardship. So, in that regard, our local law is a much stronger version of the federal law, and from the legislative intent of the federal law, it did not seem, it did not work against local laws that may want to give stronger worker protections. work against local laws that may want to give stronger worker protections. And I also just wanted to clarify for the employers that are watching that this does not mandate paid leave, but that the employee can take unpaid leave for 12 weeks and have their jobs guaranteed to come back to and the continuation of their health benefits so long as the employees continue to pay for their fair share of benefits. So, we're not forcing private employers to give paid leave for 12 weeks. We're saying this law will allow people to preserve their jobs and preserve their health benefits while they're going through the healing process. And by design, this was intended to go beyond the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act. So, I rise to offer strong support for this bill. By extending FMLA leave to include miscarriages, we recognize the time needed for recovery, reflection, and emotional support, which is essential for the well-being of our whole community. The current protections under the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act are commendable, yet they do not address the full scope of needs that arise from such a personal loss. Our bill corrects this by providing up to 12 weeks of unpaid leave. This ensures that no individual or family member has to choose between their job and their health benefits and their time to heal. And by safeguarding these health benefits during this period, we ensure that physical and mental health care remains within reach, which is paramount during such a challenging time. As we stand here today, let us be reminded of our commitment to the people of Guam to uphold the values of compassion and support. When this bill was first enacted, it was an exercise by my policy team at a little bit of their own emotional catharsis, a way for them to deal with that loss because it was personal for them too. And what turned into just an exercise in expressing grief, when we looked down at the nuts and bolts of what they had through, it was actually a legitimately good and compassionate idea we had. And we introduced it today. So, with the help of all my colleagues, I, I hope we could get this bill passed. And to my wife and our little angels, we never got to meet, this one was for you. And for all the women out there who reached out and told me it happened to me too, for those women that had to go through that healing and that pain and never had an opportunity to meet some of those wonderful little angels, this one is for you as well. And with that, Madam Speaker, I yield the rest of my time. Thank you very much. And I'd also like to add the bill to the third reading file.
All right, so there's been a motion to move the Bill Number... Bill Number 85-37 LS, as amended by the committee and further amended on the floor to the third reading. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. All right, we're going to now move on to the next bill, which is Bill Number 165-37 COR. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Sizus Massey, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill 165-37 as amended by the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics Research and Planning onto the third reading file, and I wish to discuss.
Please proceed.
In 2004, the United States Environmental Protection Agency implemented a consent decree with the government of Guam due to the government of Guam's violation of the Clean Water Act stemming from the Ordot landfill's leachate contamination. After ownership was transferred from the U.S. Navy to the government of Guam in 1950, the Ordot landfill constituted Guam's sole landfill for the island's population, including the U.S. Naval Base Guam and Anderson Air Force Base. And the creation of the military landfill options in the '70s reduced the Ordot landfill's capacity to that of a municipal landfill, and the landfill continued to operate until its closure in 2011. From 1986 to 2008, the government of Guam lacked the financial and administrative capacity to prevent leachate contamination from the Ordot landfill, of which includes contamination from U.S. military's usage of the landfill prior to the '70s. And the continued contamination of the Ordot landfill is interrelated to its status as a superfund site. And the associated costs culminated in the 2004 consent decree, the Ordot landfill's 2011 closure, and the ongoing post-closure cleanup. The government of Guam's inability to fully fund operations concerning Ordot landfill and the LaZon landfill resulted in the 2008, the District Court of Guam's 2008 appointment of the federal receiver. The U.S. District Court of Guam appointed solid waste management consultants Gerschman, Brechner, and Bratton as a federal receiver of the former Solid Waste Management Division of the Guam Department of Public Works to ensure the government of Guam's compliance with the 2004 consent decree. In enforcing the terms of the consent decree, the receiver established tipping fees to compensate for the cost of improving the island's solid waste collection and disposal operations. The Ordot landfill post-closure care continues to comprise a substantial amount of Guam Solid Waste Authority's total expenditures, with 40% of GSWA's expenditures attributed to assigned contracts and Ordot landfill's post-closure care for fiscal 2021. The government of Guam has been the sole financier of the Ordot landfill's closure and the cleanup to date. And so consequently, it sued the U.S. Navy in 2017 for their contribution to the Ordot landfill's contamination and associated cleanup costs. Through the steady progress of Guam Solid Waste Utility, in 2019, Guam Solid Waste was granted partial autonomy by the court with the post-closure care remaining under receivership. Guam Solid Waste continues to make this steady progress to gain full autonomy under the guidance of the Board of Directors and their chairman, Andrew Gell, who has stayed with Guam Solid Waste since the receivership and currently under the expert management of the general manager, Ervin Sliek, his team and staff. In the most recent Guam Solid Waste Information Hearing, it was testified by the receiver that the proposed date of ending receivership of post-closure care of the Ordot dump would be July 1st of this year, depending, of course, on the court's decision. According to the Guam Solid Waste Authority, the decision depends on their ability to demonstrate both financial and technical capability. Demonstrating financial capability was greatly supported with a recent landmark Supreme Court decision that recognized the U.S.'s responsibility in the contamination at Ordot and the subsequent partial settlement of $49 million less legal fees and the U.S. EPA administrative fee, which is estimated to be reduced to approximately $27 million. The receiver's research and analysis determined that tipping fees will remain low at costs provided that all Guam's residents subscribe to garbage collection services. However, Guam Solid Waste has indicated that approximately 18,000 of our island's residents are unregistered for curbside garbage collection services, further noting that the 2021 tonnage analysis paradoxically demonstrates LaZon landfill is receiving most of the island's refuse. The discrepancies between the unsubscribed residents and tonnage received at LaZon landfill suggest a multitude of avenues through which residents dispose of their garbage. While some unsubscribed residents choose to dispose their garbage at transfer stations for a nominal fee, Guam Solid Waste has also determined that some of them dump their garbage in residential or commercial trash bins, what's called piggybacking, with or without the subscriber's consent. Or some may elect to illegally dump their trash in the environment. Both piggybacking and illegal dumping hold negative financial consequence for the island's collection and disposal program as they respectfully compromise the program's financial and operational capacity through diminished subscription and associated costs of collecting illegally disposed waste. If all of Guam's residents subscribe to the Guam Solid Waste Garbage Collection Services, the economies of scale will result in lower rates per subscriber and simultaneously ensure that every resident's garbage would be collected and properly disposed of. The implementation of island-wide collection would greatly mitigate the financial and logistical challenges posed by piggybacking and illegal dumping. Island-wide collection services for Guam would also parallel the initiatives of other jurisdictions that have instituted such services. Bill 165 aims to ensure that every Guam's resident's garbage is collected and properly disposed of and the, the distribution of responsibility is equitably done in order to maintain a landfill that meets environmental regulations. We need to ensure the steady progress of Guam Solid Waste Authority and not revert back. This legislation ultimately lowers the rates per subscriber in the long run due to resulting economies of scales and implements a customer assistance program for eligible subscribers. Bill 165 is a culmination of collaborative efforts between Guam Solid Waste as well as entities such as GuamIPAC, PUC, and various members of the community. In 2019, Guam, during a Guam Legislative Roundtable hearing on illegal dumping, this, this policy was advocated as one of the means to curb illegal dumping on Guam. Even before Taifun Mawar, our island was in desperate need of an answer to this longstanding issue, which continues today, this problem still continues today. Notably, and despite the increased hardship we witnessed, Guam Solid Waste stepped up in a big way. They are on their way to increasing capacity and they are well on the way to ensuring technical capability before U.S. EPA. In fact, they receive, they received a letter to that effect. So, everyone crates trash here on Guam. I think it's really important that, that all share in this responsibility to ensure this utility is, is maintained. Without the island-wide collection, the $30 residential rate will soon increase to 35 and commercial rates will increase from 171 to 185 per month. Additionally, we are likely to see gradual increases for all rates in the following years, following years if Guam Solid Waste is to retain its ability to sustain itself. If Bill 165 passes and the island-wide collection is implemented, a customer assistance program will be established provide a low rate of $15 per household for those who cannot afford the $30 rate. Residential rates will decrease to 27 and commercial rates will increase to 178 instead of 185. There also is proposed increase in the rates of the transfer stations. So, the, the expectation, or depending on how this program is implemented, the expectation is that it would increase from $11.55 per cubic yard. So, Bill 165 requires trash collection services for residential homes or complexes that are four units or less. The bill will enable Guam Solid Waste and Guam Waterworks to enter into MOA to ensure customers are subscribed. It also authorizes Guam Solid Waste to establish a customer assistance program to provide important financial assistance to eligible rate payers. Guam Solid Waste will establish income eligibility standards for the residential class rate payer receiving financial assistance, which includes reduction of waiver or fees. Overall, the customer assistance program offers necessary trash collection services and associated financial assistance to people who previously could not afford these services. So, Bill 165 provides a framework for our, for our people to responsibly sustain Guam's only landfill and allows us as an island community to ensure equity in our responsibility in supporting a utility for each other and especially those in need. Sizus Massey.
Sizus Massey, Senator Perez. Is there anyone who'd like to be recognized on the bill? Vice Speaker, you're recognized on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for allowing me to speak on this measure as authored by the good Senator, I think from Baragada. When I look at the intent of this measure, I know it's to generate more revenue for the Guam Solid Waste Authority, which in turn will help fund post-closure care at Ordot Dump and operations at LaZon landfill by bringing in about 18,000 residents who do not subscribe to the trash collection services onboard. The measure argues mandatory trash collection will also result in lower rates per subscriber and reduction in illegal dumping and authorizes the Guam Solid Waste Authority to create a financial assistance program for low-income residents through the eligibility requirements would be dependent on the development of the program and the PUC approval. I, I, I know that when we, when we looked at this measure, if fully implemented, the new program is projected, I think, to be about $3.9 million in additional revenue. But the first year probably would bring in 1/4 of that $3.9 million due to finalizing the AAA rules and regulations in the beginning. The bill will apply with exceptions to, with some, the bill would apply with exceptions to all residential buildings. And the bill will also authorize DRT through the MOA with Guam Solid Waste Authority to garnish tax refunds for those who have not paid their trash services. And again, there was, it's talks about through the realization of this measure, GSWA may be able to offer the lower rates per month. And of course, the formula was like down from $30 some to 38 and then, and then the discounted rate could be as low as $16. I mean, depending on, on the numbers, the formula that's provided. But when I looked at this measure, one, one that came to mind because I know that there was a fiscal report that came in from BBMMR, and I wanted to see if the good author could yield to the question about business facilities and business, businesses around the island and would that measure be included in any of this through that AAA process if this measure were to pass?
With the sponsor, yield to that question.
Yes, I do. So, if I get the question correct, so what this bill does, it does not change any kind of contracts that currently exist. So, the idea is that they want to be able to allow for every, whatever the private hauler contracts that already exist with these businesses, that they continue. What this bill would do, it would ensure that all residents, residents are on a, a service of some sort, whether it's through GSWA or through a private hauler.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, I did ask this because when it was brought up to my attention and, and the intent was to make it mandatory across the board, I know that in the past, we've done it. We've done it with automobile insurances, you know? We've done it with mortgage insurances. So, the, the question came to me was, well, if we're going to do it for all the residential units, what about all the businesses and the impact of that? So, not that I'm for or against, I just want to make sure that, that based on the answer that was provided, that if we're looking at making sure that it affects everybody, that it should be parity across the whole, the, the whole community, be parity across the whole, the whole community, whether you're private, whether you're business, whether you've got contracts, I think it should be applied across the board. So I want to say that as one who has a contract with Guam Solid Waste Authority and having to pay my fair share for them picking up my trash, I want to say I'm committed to trying to at least help in the efforts of keeping Guam cleaner, greener, and healthier, that we all share in this effort to making sure that our island stays clean. But I want to make sure that if this process is laid, that everybody affected with this provision, that it apply across the board for everyone. So I'm inclined to supporting this measure as I'm already working on, working with that, but I think that we should make sure that we look at the bigger spectrum of including everybody. Sutuas Massey.
Sutuas Massey, Vice Speaker. On the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Sinaglis, you're recognized.
Thank you again, Madam Speaker. I remember a time when trash collection was free, and I just wanted to find out from the author. I'm against forcing everybody to, or forcing somebody to do something they wouldn't want to do, and that's also making them pay for trash, you know, especially if they found alternative means, legal means to dispose of their trash, like my uncle, you know? He collects all his trash, and my trash too sometimes, Uncle Raymond, thank you, and he would collect the trash and bring it to the trash facility once, once a month or something like that, and it would cost him what, about seven bucks? And here we are, we're trying to, in a sense, like tax people to get on the system to pay for trash. And there are, there are alternative, responsible ways to dispose of your trash, and so that's, that's why I stand, and I would like to ask the author, if she would yield, who's responsible for setting these rates? Would she yield?
The sponsor yields to that question.
Yes, I do yield. So we do have the AAA process, so it would be Guam Solid Waste that would initiate a rate change. Of course, it would have to go through the PUC. A PUC, their goal is to ensure that the rates are affordable. That's one of their main missions. But again, any kind of rates would have to go through an administrative process, so the public would weigh in on that.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Senator Sabina. Also, I wanted to find out if there would be a cap for those who, you know, who are indigent or less inclined to pay for these, this new across-the-board measure.
The sponsor yields to that question.
Yes, thank you for the question. So in today's paper, General Manager Ervins Like spoke about the economies of scales. So the more people that are put on subscription, the lower the rates can go. So he estimates that, I believe it was $15 for those that qualify, financially qualify, would be able to get that. And he also mentioned that the others that are not eligible would have a lower rate too, instead of increasing. So without this bill, those that are on the service would have an increase in rates. And just to share that, we all use the landfill, and it's important that, you know, just like, you know, with power, it would make sense that we hook into our neighbor's power and that expect them to pay it, pay our share, right? Or water, we hook up into their water and expect them to pay for our share of usage. Everybody throws things away, you know, they produce garbage unless you're one of that unique person that really subscribed to zero-waste practice, which I do support. But for the most part, most of us do create waste, and it's really about, you know, seeing Guam Solid Waste as a utility. This is a utility that is used by all people, and yeah, that needs to be supported equitably. Thank you.
Sutuas Massey, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Sabina. I just, you know, I just have a difficult time trying to, but you know, maybe I might be persuaded, you know, to support this measure. It's just, I don't, I don't agree with making it a cross, you know, charging everybody who's not on the, you know, you know, who doesn't have a bill, why am I going to toss them into a situation where they're going to have a bill, you know? But I do understand the good author's measure, and it's equitable, because, you know, she's right, we do all produce trash on this island, and for that, I commend her. It's just, you know, at the same time, I'm also thinking about, you know, illegal dumping. I remember, like, again, I remember the time when I was a child and, you know, trash collection was free, and, you know, if I want, if I was going to ever work on a measure of anything, I'd probably like to make it free, and I don't want to freak out my friends over there too, so, but, you know, it's something that, you know, as a child, when I was walking in and around Agad, you know, you walk to the jungles, and you see like batteries and tires, and they end up in the, and so I don't want to make it so that it's so onerous that trash gets up, gets into the, into the wrong places and disturbing our natural environment. But I do commend the author, and I might, I might have to do some mulling over and see what, see how, how things progress through this. It's just, if we were going to impose some type of mandatory payments, I would, I would prefer that it had a cap, like, from the very beginning, maybe $7, you know, is how much they charge at the, at the, the transfer station. Like, again, my uncle, my uncle collects our trash, and it costs him about $7 a month or so, and so $15 is double that, and there are responsible ways to dispose of our trash. And so that's why, that's why I'm rising and speaking on the measure, but I do commend the author, and maybe I might need some more convincing, but thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, is there anyone else who would like to speak on the bill? Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Sutuas Massey, Madam Speaker. I'm a co-sponsor on the bill, and, you know, I get it, we all got to do our part, right? And, you know, of course, yeah, the trash used to be free, and I, but that's what got us into this mess in the first place, so I commend the author. It's courageous to introduce something like this, you know, in this year and this time of year, so I'm definitely grateful to be included on this measure, which I believe is a solution to the plague of illegal dumping that we've seen. But I just did have a question for the author, because like the retiring speaker, and I'm not sure who he said he gets to pick up his trash, but my party has a truck, so we all just kind of like, hey, who's going to go dump the trash, right? And they would load up the trash, and for now, I think it's like eight, nine, yeah, day bucks a pickup load, and so we go and dump it over there at the Malolo Transfer Station, and I was looking through the bill, because that was the concern I had, was that individuals like myself, the retiring speaker, who, you know, believe that we have to be good stewards of the environment of our island, and we do our part, and it's really just a way to make ends meet. You guys know how much we get paid, right? And so to be able to put our trash together and to avail of that rate at the transfer station, I mean, I'm not even sure that it's, it equals, it might even surpass the monthly rate for the solid waste service, because I think we go a couple times a month, but, you know, I just wanted to, and I'm not sure if I'll have an amendment, but I wanted to ask the author of the bill, is she aware of any increase that's going to happen for the transfer station fees? Because I've heard things, and so I'd like to offer an amendment, but if it's going to be pointless, and if we're going to see the transfer station dumping fee rise to something that's pretty much equal to the subscriber rate per month, then, you know, the amendment would be for not. But I did want to give that consideration to people, many people, who I think maybe can't afford the $30 a month, so they, you know, put all their trash together and dump it rightfully at the transfer station where it's supposed to be, so that they can kind of save, you know, a few bucks. It's hard times out there. So if the author would yield, I'm not quite sure it's a question, maybe just a general inquiry on how we could, if we could, allow this exemption for people who dump their trash at the transfer stations, or is she aware of any increase that's coming down the pike to those services?
The sponsor yields to that question.
Yes, I do. So regarding the transfer stations with or without the island-wide collection, the proposed rates, so just keep in mind, the rates haven't increased in 10 years, so it's been pretty stagnant. And in fact, I think even the recycling was not, rates were not increased to include recycling, so they've been absorbing those costs. But in regards to the transfer station, so currently, it's $7.50 per cubic yard. The proposed rate increase would be to $11.55 per cubic yard in 2025. It would, proposed rate of $23.10 for half a pickup truck, and then $34.65 for a full pickup truck in 2025. So these are the proposed rates by Guam Solid Waste Authority, and I believe this is all tied to the management audit that they were required to do back in 2020. So in regards to economics, you know, the amount of gas it takes to go to these transfer stations, you know, it adds up too, especially with the rising cost of gas, and not only that, the benefits, you know, Guam Solid Waste picks up your white goods, certain amounts, certain batteries, and other unused, even furniture, right, furniture, two pickups a year. So, you know, there are benefits to this, and you save on, you know, the gas, and of course, these rates will go up, potentially, most likely go up with the transfer stations. Not sure exactly if these proposed rates will be adopted, but that's the expectation.
Senator Barnett.
Sutuas Massey, to the author of the measure. Yeah, so I get it, the less subscribers, the more we have to eat the cost of the sins of the past, and the more subscribers, the lower that paying of the piper will be. So I thank the author for yielding to the question, and yeah, I knew that $8 was too good to be true, so it hasn't been updated in 10 years, so regardless, it sounds like this is something that would increase anyway, so Sutuas Massey, Madam Speaker.
Sutuas Massey, Senator Barnett. On the bill, is there anyone who'd like to speak on the bill? Senator Taitik, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I think the last speaker spoke about introducing this legislation during a time now, this year. It can be very controversial, especially during the public hearing, which I attended. I didn't see one person from the community supporting the bill. The testimony I received and calls that I received from constituents, not one of them supported the bill. However, we had all the agencies there, GW, which I will speak on later because they had some concerns, but of course, Guam Solid Waste, Public Utilities, PUC also supported in favor, but of course, with concerns, again, supporting the legislation, and I'm pretty sure that EPA has the same feeling of supporting it. But it's the public, the true heartbeat of our island, that had grave concerns about this. And even though it allows 180 days to create rules and regulations for the penalties, I think that that's not enough time to get our families prepared, especially those, especially those who don't generate that much trash. It was talked about earlier, the previous speaker, about the cost per truckload at $7.25 per truckload. There are families that actually go to the transfer station once every two months, but yet the cost for them would be 30, 30-plus dollars, and sometimes, they would take their parents, like this one testimony, if you look, if you read the committee report, there's this one letter from a constituent that had a lot of concerns. His mother, who lives right next door to him, who's a manmku, doesn't generate a whole lot of trash, they go every two months to the transfer station at $7.25 versus getting a trash bin for 35 plus an additional $15 to make it two trash bins, costs them $45 a month versus $7.25 every two months. Now, I've been one that's been an advocate for our environment. I've put out legislation that would put fines and penalties for those, you know, cigarette butts, or supporting all legislation that has to do with dumping, increasing the dumping But we have to listen to our constituents at this time. We have to find a balance, basically, is what we need to do. But when you have all these constituents coming to you and saying that they don't support the measure, then there's a huge, huge concern. And if there is those people who do support the measure, but hasn't come to me, I'm pretty sure they have the funds to pay for their trash. They have the means to do so. But if you look at our statistics on this island, on really how much people can afford, the cost of living, the living within their means, the whole scenario of people living in poverty here, it's almost 80% of our island, 80%. Many of them are retirees, living on a fixed income, a fixed income. Now, I understand that this legislation can, you know, bring some kind of balance, but, Madam Speaker, if the PUC is going to make, have the authority to decide how much tipping fees are going to be, maybe this year, the first year, if this bill goes through, that the first year it's implemented, what stops PUC in two years from now raising the fees But everybody needs to think, if we are having the ability to waive, which allows, PUC would be obligated, the need to increase the rate, but those would also be allowed, if I'm not mistaken, I need to be reminded, if I could have the author of the legislation without looking at the bill, who decides on if they waive the fee in the first place? If they don't have the funds or the means to do so, they're on public assistance? If I ask, if I could ask the author to yield, who will be deciding that? And is that the one that's going to go through the penalties of the 180 days? Can she answer that question for me?
The sponsor yields to that question. The sponsor yield to that question?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
Would you please repeat the question?
Not a problem. So we're going to have a program that allows an agency to decide who will be given the ability to waive the fee, the cost of trash collection fees. Who, who will be the deciding factor?
Okay, if I can give some background. So the, the intent of the customer assistance program was to mimic a lot of the, like, say, the SNAP program. So they're already going to base it off of those who are already eligible for these other types of programs that help people in need. So I believe that they are going to be, from my understanding, is that that was the intent, is for them to automatically qualify. And in fact, that, those programs are ready, for instance, like Section 8, they all provide some utility subsidies, power, water, and trash. So there's already a built-in system to help those that, you know, that need that safety net. And this is what Guam Solid Waste would like to emulate. So in no way, they are going to, I mean, that's their first, first efforts, is to ensure that, to try to cover that whole population. So their intent is to really provide the aid to those that are already, currently have it, so nobody's left out.
Thank you for that, to the author, and furthering with the programs that are given to SNAP program. However, it is going to be GWSA who will determine or follow those guidelines to decide who gets the waiver, understandable. But majority of the people on this island have some kind of subsidies or is provided public assistance. How can we guarantee, when that, you're looking at almost 80% of the island, how is that going to lower our rates? The whole nemesis is to have everybody on this island to pay for trash pickup. Now, I can understand if everybody on the island pays for trash pickup, if we can lower the cost considerably and keep it at a minimum. I understand that this, this does that, but it's the PUC that can raise the rates, and we all know with power, how the PUC very, you know, nonchalantly raises rates on power and water, almost consistently. It doesn't stop them from raising the rates. They're given the power in this bill, this legislation, to do that and address it. 180 days is for something like this, that's going to turn a lot of households into deciding whether they're going to put food on their table or be able to pay for their car payment or pay their power bill, is going to be a deciding factor. For some of us in here, it might not bother us, but we're a small percentage of this island. We have to think of those who don't have the means. We have to think of those families who make an effort to cut corners as much as they can, just like that one constituent who wrote us and said, this is what they do. They pick up his mother's trash, his trash, they go to the, to the transfer station once every two months. Responsible individuals, are they going to take that in consideration? And that was one of the questions that I also would like to ask the author. Are they going to take that consideration for that family who can provide a receipt every month, or every time they dump trash, based on the weight and their family, to show GWSA, I take my trash to the transfer station, and this is my, my receipt and my bill, so that you don't have to charge me 30-some dollars a month? Or let's say they lower it down to 20-some dollars a month. So the question is, is GWSA going to take that into consideration for those responsible constituents, those responsible people in our community who do take their trash, who don't dump their trash in the jungle or on the road, but do take their trash to the transfer station? Are they going to consider that? So I asked the author of the legislation, if families who produce these receipts and show that they drop, they dump their trash properly, because it's all about the environment, Madam Speaker. So the question is to the author.
The sponsor yield to that question?
I'm open, I'm open to amendment. So if we want to include that as an exemption, is the person, I'm sorry, the good senator willing to make that amendment?
If the family can produce a receipt showing that they're being responsible and providing, I would like to proffer that amendment, very much so, because I'm still not sure whether I'm going to support this legislation or not. You know, but in the event it gets through, of course, I'm going to put that amendment in, in case it gets through. So I'd like to have the opportunity to put that amendment in. But let me finish off with the rest, okay? If I may. GWA had testimony in the committee report, if you had the opportunity to read it. They had issues with litigation. So I'd like to ask the proffer of the bill, if she can explain the concerns that were addressed in GWA's testimony on some of the concerns. And one of them is being involved in litigation, as well as four other points. Thank you, Madam Speaker, to the author of the bill.
The sponsor yield to that question?
Yeah, so that was addressed in the amended bill. We did address those concerns, because I think one of the issues was privacy, a privacy issue. So to just to ensure that, yeah, they are not accountable. So, yeah, so the language was changed.
And there were a couple other more concerns.
Get to restate those, Senator. Are you ready to yield, Senator Perez?
So, yeah, if you can be more clear about which concerns are you referring to, because the language that was provided from, by GWA addressed those concerns, it's in Section 4 of the bill.
Well, it was, it's, it is in their testimony on, we did discuss about the breach of personal information, and it said it was already implemented into the amended bill. But the other one is, is their concern, it's not clear in the bill, if implementation required GW to determine which of the existing 43,000 customers already have GSWA service or services from private hauler, receiving information from other parties to validate which DWA's existing customer need the GWA service to direct function, customer service, the integrity of the information in private parties cannot be confirmed, and GWA's case not placed. So that's, that's number two. Just to confirm whether it's, that is also addressed.
The sponsor yield to that question?
So that one would be administratively done, so they would have to do the groundwork, so to speak, to determine which customers would be on trash service. So for instance, let's say in a dwelling unit, a multi-dwelling unit, that's four units or less, they would have to actually go through each of those and determine which one would qualify for utility, the Guam Solid Waste utility, so that, that is more an administrative process.
Second, oh, thank you so much. Thank you, Senator Perez. The other section is the language above applies to residential premises, is Section 3 of GWA. It's not clear if the mandate requires GW to provide leases or leaseurs' information to GSWA when it regards to apartment, rental condos and apartment units.
Sponsor yield to that question?
So I believe that, that again, is also administrative, so they are, they have, they would have to get the subscribers of Guam Water Works, who are the ratepayers on the Guam Water Works side, and then, again, they would have to reconcile who would be, would fall under this bill. So again, this bill only really addresses the residents who are in units, multi-dwelling units of four or less, and so this is what this bill would address. It's, so they would have to reconcile that, that information with GWA.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, there are quite a bit of constituents out there who are very concerned about this. I think 180 days is really not enough time to implement something like this. I'd also like to make another amendment to incorporate, you know, to increasing that, to allow a little bit more time. I think our constituents need that.
Senator, yeah, I'm going to call a recess of our session until 2:00 PM Monday. That will allow you time to make your amendment. It will also allow us to use this afternoon for our youth counterparts to continue. We're going to have a session for Youth Leadership Day that will begin at 2:00 PM. So we're going to recess where we are right here in our session and continue that at 2:00 PM on Monday. All right? So recess until 2:00 PM Monday. Please have your amendments prepared. Situs Massey, recess until 2:00 PM.